So, at this time I'll call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlem City Commission to order. This time I'd like to call Commissioner and Mayor Probst and Leal to lead us in the case.
That is correct. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. We ask that you be with us, watch over us, guide us. Lord, just allow us at this time of the year to reflect the real reason for this season, birth of Jesus Christ. Lord, we just ask that you be with all those that are in need this season, Lord, that those of us that are capable of helping others, that we do that. Lord, as we deliberate the matters of the city this day, be with us, guide us, and watch over us, so Jesus Christ hold it in, we pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Welcome. I'm glad to have you all here in our meeting tonight, and I'm sure that the Commission joins me in wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. I always forget to do this at the end of the meeting, so I'm trying to remember to do it at the beginning of the meeting. But we sure do hope everybody has a great holiday with their family and friends. So, item one is the approval of the minutes of November 18th, 2015, a regular meeting, and the May 18th, 2015, joint meeting with the Harlem City Improvement Board. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Publicly.
Thank you, of approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Questions, carries. Next item, two A through G is the consent agenda, subject to adopt the consent.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Item three is to consider and take action to approve an ordinance on a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in Allied Industry District located at 422 North L Street, bearing legal description of lots eight through ten, block two, House Meyer Edition. The applicant, David Martinez, this item is tabled for the last meeting, so any motion is taken off the table.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If the item is taken off the table.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. At the last City Commission meeting, you directed staff to set up a meeting with the affected property owner and the applicant, myself, to discuss his concerns on the requested SUP. I did contact the affected property owner the very next day, and the affected property owner stated that he had previously met with the applicant and had no objections to the requested SUP, subject to the applicant providing a perimeter fence around their front patio, which would be this patio here in the front of the property, and no late hours permit. However, since then, as of Monday, I was contacted by the applicant, who initially was in agreement with those two conditions. However, on Monday, the applicant came by the office and stated that he does have objections to the no late hours permit because he'd like to host or have televised pay-per-view events whenever there's a boxing event or UFC fighting event. But however, he's still willing to put the fence, but he does have a concern with a no late hours permit, and he is here present to, in case you had any questions, on the requested SUP.
Okay, so we don't have an agree-- we do not have an agreement because the bar owner, the applicant, doesn't want to cease operating or selling liquor at midnight, right?
At two o'clock. He doesn't want to cease operation at midnight, he wants to close at two o'clock, correct? So there is no agreement, correct?
I had some concerns about the fact that it was in a residential neighborhood, so I drove by there, and I went and visited with the previous manager of the operation, when it was Papa Joe's. And I asked him about it, and he said that he didn't have any problem with the neighbors. He says initially there were some issues, but they turned the music down. He said the problem that he had mainly with his karaoke guy, and he got him to turn the music down. So they were able to work everything out, because he's a pretty easygoing guy. He did not, however, have the after-hours deal. I think he had a permit to do that, but he's decided that he would close at 12:00, because there just wasn't enough business between 12:00 and 2:00. So, the fact that it's a residential neighborhood, to me, there's a lot of residents across the street, that two o'clock is a little bothersome to me. I mean, I was kind of, I liked it when I saw it in here, that it was no late hours.
Right.
Okay. I know Commissioner Del Rosso sent an email expressing some concern about the issue of the late hours. So he's not here, he's not with us tonight.
I just know that if I lived across the street, I wouldn't want to go until two o'clock across from my house.
Right, and prior to the applicant submitting the application, staff did advise the applicant to visit with the surrounding property owners, due to the request being a bar lounge and it varies residential across the street. He said he had met with some of the property owners, I guess he didn't meet with all of them, but staff did advise him on that issue prior to submitting the SUP application.
I mean, the previous use of the property was as sort of a restaurant that sold beer and wine.
Correct.
And this use is more of a no restaurant, just a bar lounge.
Right.
And the applicants here.
The applicant is here present.
We hear from the applicant. Your applicants?
My name is Joel Mata. This is my brother-in-law, David. He is the applicant on the form there. Our initial intentions is to open as a restaurant. We want to sell barbecue. There's only one competitor here, which is Big Junk's, or the Real Grandic, which is downtown. Our biggest thing is just to sell barbecue. So when we went down to the building with the planning and zoning, they told us to fill out the form, but overthink it. Overthink it and put till two, we want to do. We still haven't gotten our TABC license. We're waiting for here. But our intentions are not to stay open till two every night, at all, because of, it's not going to be busy, we're going to lose money. So therefore, on some pay-per-view events, we want to just stay open till two. I'm not going to say we're going to be open till Monday, till Tuesday. We're going to be closed probably Monday and Tuesday. Sometimes maybe on Sunday, because Sunday's a family day. We're hoping to be open maybe Thursday, Friday, and Saturday till two o'clock, get the late permit, but the other nights close 12:00. And we do understand about this, the ordinance for music. Of course, when we mentioned we're going to have live music, it wasn't going to be a six-man band. We're talking about one-man acoustic, that's what we're talking about. But again, the people at the planning and zoning told us to overthink it. Overthink of what you're trying to do. Okay, just wrote it down. Then it came up to you, all right. But before we turned in the application, we lived down the street. We spoke to everybody. We even passed the 24 letters. We went beyond the 24 letters that were sent out. We understood everything that Mr. Felix had talked to Mr. Del Rosso. We understood what he was talking about. We understand that his daughter is kind of ill. We understand all that. We understand that we're going to keep it low.
Okay, so if we don't overthink this, what do you want to do, exactly?
Open till 12:00, and some days, stay open till two, if business is good. I don't want Mr. Castillo, Mr. Liao being there at one of our events, or anybody being there hosting a pay-per-view event, and it's still not on. This past weekend, it didn't come on until 11:45. Then I have to tell them to leave 15 minutes later, and it's still not on. Pay-per-view men hadn't even started.
And where does barbecue fit into this?
I'm going to be selling that as it's going on, sir.
Okay, so you're mainly a barbecue place?
We want to do both.
With some, whatever.
The same as a previous restaurant, same as it was before, but we're adding liquor to it.
Can you live with closing at midnight?
Some days, yes. Most of the days.
I mean, we're just asking for three days till two o'clock. It will be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, which is a weekend.
If it's slow, we're going to close at midnight.
Do you have plans to open the restaurant? No plans to open the restaurant unless you get the...
Well, we're going with the city ordinance right now. They have, I mean, they told, I talked to the health department, they told me I can, being a business, if I open as a business, I can barbecue on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And so that's the best way for me to try it out, also see if it's going to work out. Instead of me going with the full kitchen and get everything ready, and it don't work out, and I put all this money into it.
The previous owner that was there still has some equipment, that he hasn't told us what he's going to move out yet. So once we get approved, we're going in there. If we get approved today, we're going in there tomorrow, and seeing what it's going to take out. So it might cost us a lot more than what we're expecting to be.
Okay. I've got a question. In the past, when we've had some difficult decisions like this, we've allowed people a six-month permit. And most of that is based on the fact that sometimes people are complaining about the music, or in the past they've had incidences there that weren't conducive to the neighborhood. If we allowed you a six-month, and you're going to make this investment, and then all of a sudden we get a bad report, and you're going to have to come back, and we're going to tell you we're going to deny it, you're going to lose your investment.
Well, that's why, I mean, they brought it up to me like that, and I said, if it's going to be like that, I just, I won't do anything then, because I mean, I'm not going to put the money up, invest it, and then six months later, I'm getting closed down.
But remember what I'm saying. If you don't live by what you're telling us, that you're going to be turning the music down, it's going to be pay-per-view, not a band till two o'clock?
Yeah.
And you're not going to have people that are going to be getting arrested out front for disorderly? You know, we're going to run a nice establishment, and you don't have anything to worry about.
Yeah.
That's the reason we give the six-month.
Yeah. I understand that, sir, but what happens if Mr. Desmond comes in and starts complaining for no particular reason?
Well, usually we have a uniformed officer who fills out that form, and says he observed that there was a problem there, because some guy on a motorcycle is cranking it up full blast, 1:30 in the morning before he leaves peeling out. Or we have bikes that are breaking out. Or we have loud music, and y'all refuse to turn it down. You know, those residents are going to call in, and then the officers are going to go out there and report whether or not a real infraction is occurring, or somebody's just picking at you. But my real point is, is that you two are responsible adults that are saying, we want to have a business, and I'm all for business. But my concern is, is that we make a deal today, and we're going to have a broken deal in six months.
I'm pretty sure, I mean, we can keep up with that. Like, I told, I talked to the residents, and I told them, I'm going to try my best to, you know, have somebody out there at night checking everything going on outside in the parking. I'm going to hire security on the weekends. That's when I see the most problem, happily. You know, I'm going to try my best, and I go, you know, whether he can turn to me about the fence coming up, and I said, if, have somebody looking at toward your house, I mean, there's nothing I can really do. I mean, if it's in the area where the smoking part are, I mean, yeah, I can close it in all I want, but let's say they parked in their car, and they're looking at you, I go, not much I can do. I mean, I can, you know, I'm not going to tell them, don't be looking over there.
That was his biggest concern, is having people looking at his property.
Can they come back? They can come back and amend, they can come back and petition to amend the SUP, can't they?
You mean, you mean they have...
Let's say, let's say, a year from now, they say, we really want to, say, if you grant it, if we pass the ordinance without the late-night permit, and just, you know, and they went ahead and opened, and they still wanted to stay open beyond midnight, they could come back and petition to amend the SUP.
I would think so. I don't see why they couldn't.
But we asked that question, sir, and they said we have to pay another fee again?
Well, I think, I've been famous for saying, if we do this, and we can waive that fee, I'm trying to tell you guys, I want to work with you, but at the same time, I've got a responsibility to the public too.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to be, you know, have a nice compromise here. That's what I wanted to do.
Well, in other words, instead of giving them a six-month SUP, pass it the way it's written, the way it was, if there had been an agreement at some point. If they still want to do it, then they can operate that way, and then if they, then they can prove how they operate the business for a period of time, and then if they really want the three-day, you know, late-night permit, have them come back, and we can look at that time. It's either, at this point, you know, the, it looks like we either pass it the way it's presented, give them the extension, give them the late-night, or table it, or deny it altogether.
I share Commissioner Leal's concerns, because what we want to do is, we want you to have a successful business, but not at the expense of the people that are living around you. And so, you know, the pay-per-view, are those always on a Friday night, or a Saturday night? Typically Friday or Saturday night?
Always on a Saturday.
Always on a Saturday.
Always on a Saturday?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm trying to come up with some sort of a compromise here. I can tell you, the previous owner said that it wasn't worth it for him to stay open from 12:00 to 2:00.
And we don't plan to stay open. If it's, if it's somewhat slow, we will close down early. I mean, we don't have, it's not stated we're going to open till two every Saturday. I mean, if it's, the way I told you, like, the way I'm looking at it, if it's, the first two months, if it's slow, I'll just close down early. Because I won't, those are the days I'll be having the food, so I want to go get home also. I don't want to be there all night.
Well, the compromise is that, compromise is in the ordinance, as it's presented, and that's the compromise that gives the property owners nearby some protection that they're concerned about, and that still allows you to, you know, operate the business, just not till two.
If I may intervene, I got here a little bit late.
No, wait a second. I'm not recognizing anyone else, okay?
Well, the City Commissioner, the City Commissioner, it's different than what you're saying.
You just walked in, and you're not here for any part of the discussion, so I'm not, really not going to let you participate. We've had a long discussion about this, you don't know what we've already covered.
But you're wrong.
So, what are the wishes of the Commission?
And I'd like to see some sort of compromise. I want you to open, I want you to sell barbecue, I want you to make a ton of money. But yes, on the other hand, we have to respect the citizens' sleep time. How about if we do Saturday only till midnight? Let me tell you. What I was going to ask, is there any way that we can, I know that we have the food part for that. Late night, Saturday nights only. Saturday nights only.
Would that work? Oh, that would work for me.
Can you live with that?
Yeah. I can live with that. I'm still going to pay my permit for TABC until two, but that's fine. And then in six months, we'll come back, maybe give me two more days.
Are the options... I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, we need to measure this, and I really feel for those citizens.
Are any of the property owners here, or any of the neighbors here? Okay, well then...
I make a motion that we accept the ordinance as it is, with the exception of, we add late-night hours on Saturday night only, till 2:00 AM.
I think the City Attorney's got to read the caption.
You want me to read it now?
I'll read it now, and then I'm sure you'll want to make this motion to amend, to adopt it as amended.
You want me to read it with that change?
Sure.
Okay.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance number seven dash twenty-seven, the City of Harlem to issue a specific use permit to David Martinez to allow a bar lounge in the Allied Industry District located at 422 North L Street, bearing legal description of lots eight through ten, block two, House Meyer Edition number two, subject to one, providing a six-feet solid fence around the perimeter of the front patio, two, providing and maintaining the required off-street parking spaces, three, obtaining the proper state TABC wine and beer retail permit. No late hours permit be permitted, with the exception of Saturday, and I'll repeat that again, with Saturday until 2:00 AM. No, provide video surveillance of all entrances and exits, and maintaining a 30-day retention of the video, provide adequate lighting on the premises, providing a licensed security guard in the parking lot during peak hours of operation on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, Thursday and Friday from 9:00 PM to midnight, and Saturday from 9:00 PM until 2:00 AM. And comply with requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, health, fire, and police departments, providing for publication and preventing other matters related to the foregoing.
Sir, are you guys comfortable with what he just read?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
And that's their motion to adopt the...
So moved. The only thing we didn't put in there, do we not need to make the stipulation, we're going to allow them to come back within the next 12 months, that they feel that they'd like to...
They can do that anyway. They can do that anyway.
Without a fee? No? Okay. Second.
We have a second.
I didn't hear the yes or no.
Nobody wanted to move?
Well, do you want to accept that as an amendment? We can amend, we can include that on the second reading, if you want to add, if you want to add that stipulation.
We can add the stipulation that if they come back within 12 months and want to request a change, there'll be no fee. Second.
We'll add that to the caption.
Okay, that'll be added, so we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. All right, thank you. Item four is to consider and take action to grant a variance regards to a five-foot sidewalk requirement expressed by 83 Frontage Road on the proposed Harlem Road subdivision, bearing legal description of 9.466 acre tract out of block 13, Stewart Place subdivision of Survey 138, located on the south side of Expressway 83, east corner of Beckham Road and Frontage Road. This applicant is Eduardo H. Mejia.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant's requesting a variance to not provide a sidewalk on the proposed three-lot subdivision, which is located on Beckham Road and Expressway 83. This is a subject, a three-lot subdivision. Generally, the sidewalk can be required along the frontage of, Frontage Road and Business 83. Subject property has about 1,200 feet of frontage on Business 83, and about 140 feet of frontage on Beckham Road. This is an area view of the property. See, it's actually west of Gilman Chevrolet. This blue line actually represents that there are no sidewalks from Bass Boulevard, which is the city limit bounding line, all the way down to Spur 54. This red line here is actually the subject property, just to show where it's located at. So from Bass Boulevard to Spur 54, there are no sidewalks. The city engineer has reviewed the request and has recommended approval of the variance. Planning and zoning recommended denial of the variance, being that they felt that the city should continue to promote sidewalks in the area for any new commercial construction. I'll take any questions on the item, and the applicant is also present for any questions.
We're going to need a majority vote to overturn the planning and zoning?
Right, it'd be a four-fist vote to overturn the decision of PNC Commission.
To override, if you're going to override PNC's decision. So there are existing businesses along that floor?
Right, there's existing business along this area. You can see, most of it's developed with commercial use along the Frontage Road. And of course, the blue represents that there's no sidewalks on...
None of the dealerships to the west of it there, there's no sidewalk from Toyota, Dodge, Kia.
Right.
If they were given a variance not with sidewalks, and it's the Bird Dog, and this is right next to the Bird Dog in District Five.
It's about, yeah, the Bird Dog is about 1,500 feet from this property, or less.
And there are no sidewalks in front of Gilman?
Correct, there's no sidewalks.
All right, well, what's the, what are the wishes of the Commission?
I'd like to make a motion that we overturn the PNC, and allow the variance for no sidewalk. Second.
All right, the motion is second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, we have four, is that everybody?
Do we need to...
Just ask who's opposed, and I think we've got it.
Is anyone opposed? Motion, the motion carries, five, four votes. Item five, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading to renew a specific use permit to allow the continuation of a bar lounge in the general retail GR District located at 422 South D Street, bearing legal description of block 12, block 85, Robstown original town size.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting the renewal of a specific use permit to continue operating a bar lounge known as Robstown, which is located on the corner of D Street and Harrison Avenue. This is a subject, a building. The hours of operation will continue to remain the same, which would be from, seven days a week, from 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And of course, the reason this one is coming back for the one-year renewal is because, per the Code of Ordinances, if a bar is located within the downtown area or La Placita area, the initial permit cannot be for no longer than one year. Other than that, there was no issues with this particular bar. The only change he's making to this request, as he's proposing an outdoor patio for smoking, which is this area here, there'd be no roof, it would be an outdoor patio. The request was reviewed and approved by the Building, Fire, and Health Department. We did have a public hearing before the planning and zoning commission, there's no concerns addressed regarding the requested renewal. The police department has also submitted a report, which has only showed one incident within the past year. Staff in PNC are recommending approval, subject to the applicant, maintaining the required lighting, maintaining the security guard during peak hours of operation, maintaining his proper permits, and compliance with the requirements of the appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
Okay. Item A, is the public hearing, what's the public hearing answer? Would you like to speak for or against this SUP?
Good afternoon, Your Honor. As Mr. Olivo clearly indicated that he would take questions, he kind of double-stepped the issue of the DID by saying La Placita. My recall is that some of the owners have retrenched back to the area of the railroad, or the rails, is that correct? How far does the DID go now?
The DID goes up to most of the railroads, but only, there is a property on the west side of the railroad.
All right, there you go. Exactly my contingent, that we're probably within 100 feet proximity of the railroad. Yet, your packet, again, indicates what? That there's an exemption that he's referring to, based on Ms. Munoz asserting what? That there's a DID. Nay, false. Then, there's the other matter of being near a church. That depiction there shows that the property runs up against the alley. A church that I attended for well over 40 years, and still frequent, is well within 500 yards, 500 feet. And I know one of the members of your commission supposedly has concerns about spiritual and religious matters. So, that has run afoul yet again of a supposed guideline that you all utilize. And I don't believe the priest in charge of the Maclet Heart of Mary would like for that particular guideline to be infringed. And therefore, you need to be consistent. Obviously, that's my point. And there's probably, well, we'll get to that, those items in a little bit. Regardless, I think you need to be consistent. And so if you want to be micromanaging certain things, I think you need to have your facts correct. And if you have your facts correct, and that's what I was implying earlier, there is a Commissioner in Austin right now. He differs a lot with what was stated earlier, but we need to get our facts straight.
All right, does anyone else want to speak for or against this SUP? Hearing, I don't, it was a public hearing, and go to IOP, which is consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading, or a specific use permit to allow bar lounge that the government should describe the property, or you read the caption.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance number seven dash twenty-seven, the City of Harlem, to renew a specific use permit issued to Robert U. Harlem, to continue to allow a bar lounge in the general retail district located at 304 South D Street, bearing legal description of lots 12, block 85. Harlem original town size, subject to one, providing and maintaining video surveillance for a 30-day retention of the video, providing security personnel during peak hours of operation, Thursday through Saturday, 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Three, providing adequate lighting around all building entrances and exits. Three, providing adequate lighting around all building entrances and exits. Four, obtaining and maintaining all proper state key of residence. And five, complying with the requirements administered by planning and zoning buildings and environmental health, fire prevention, and police departments for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like side, motion carries. Item six, the public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single-family R one district to general retail GR district, four point one three seven one acres out of lot five, zero point one four six acres out of lot six, zero point two eight acres out of lot seven, and all of lot eight, block twenty-nine, Pinewood Heights subdivision, and point zero three acres out of block two, hall and quarter subdivision, all properties generally located on the south side of Taft Avenue, east of expressway seventy-seven. Applicant is Joe Rodriguez.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from a residential single-family to general retail district to allow for a commercial use on irregular-shaped property, irregular-shaped property being this property here, which is lot number eight. The other three properties, which are lot five, six, and seven, were included in the zoning request, meaning in support of the requested zoning and for possible future commercial use on their properties and marketing of those properties as commercial use whenever they do decide to sell those properties. As you can see, these properties are located on Taft Avenue and the expressway. This is an aerial view of the properties. You can see the subject irregular-shaped property, which is this property here, is actually vacant with the exception of a billboard sign, which is on the southwest side of the property. This property has about fifty feet of frontage on Taft Avenue and a hundred and forty feet of frontage on the frontage road. The other three properties that you can see are currently occupied with single-family residents. This is an expanded aerial view of the properties. You can see to the north, the, the area is developed with commercial use. You have an apartment complex to the north, and then you have the Vance out of Supply, and then the Stripes, and then further north is further commercial on F. To the east, you have a residential use, and of course, to the south, you have the Royal Colorado, then of course, you have further south, the bogus four dealership. Uh, this is, any pictures of you looking from the east, uh, from the west, these are the three residents. Uh, and of course, this is, you're looking at from the, from the north, this is from the frontage road. You can see this is a subject property, and this is a billboard sign. There was a public hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concerns addressed by, during the public hearing. We did notify the affected property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius of this property, and we received only two calls remaining concerned about it, but it would affect their taxes, wouldn't, would depend on the use of the property, so they had no concerns in the request to be zoning. The future land use actually shows it as, as general retail, so the request is consistent with the future land use map. Staff in P&amp;Z are recommending approval of the request. I'll take any questions on the item.
Can you go back to your first slide? Yes. There's a horizontal line across six and seven. Does that mean the property ends there, or that's just a line?
That's, that's where the property ends for lots five, six, and seven. Lot eight is basically this section right here, this, this...
Okay, so the bottom of six and the bottom of seven are not included.
Well, somebody different, the way I interpreted it was originally the applicant or someone made a request for all of lot eight and the south half of block seven.
Correct.
And he did not include five and six.
Right, five, six, and seven.
And that was turned down.
That was turned down about twelve years ago.
Yeah, about twelve years ago. Now, they've come back, and everybody's all in agreement.
Right, correct.
Now, with five, six, seven, and eight, and that's why P&amp;Z approved it, because they're all in agreement.
Correct, that's correct.
And does the applicant own these properties?
The applicant owns, uh, the one that initially requested owns lot eight, or this flag-shaped lot, and then the other two property owners included their request with the application. So they are in agreement with the request of rezoning.
And that map is really not accurate, because those lines that you have coming down don't exist. That's actually one piece of property that's flag-shaped. Is that correct?
Uh, actually, the map is correct. This line does exist. It actually, uh, that's, that's the way it's shown.
Not, not the horizontal line, the vertical line.
So, the, the line comes between six and seven, divide those two lots?
Right.
You have, you have that line continuing, but naturally, it's one block, and it goes, wraps around the backs of the...
Correct, that's correct.
That's, that's where I was confused.
Right, that's correct.
Well, the original application just said for the south half of seven, does he actually own all of the south half of six?
He does, correct.
Okay, let's go to item A, a public hearing, and go to the public hearing, does anyone like to speak for or against this ordinance to rezone from single-family R one to general retail? State your name and your residence.
Rhonda Sonna. That area, it was a residential area.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Your residence address, you have to state your residence address.
Twenty-four ten Riverside Drive. As you all know, you know, uh, your former mayor very well.
It's, it's part of the required, it's required...
I'm sure Randy has said his address often enough. I just, consistency is not a hemogoblin you're familiar with. That is a residential area. Earlier tonight, you heard concerns about neighbors. Why can't we continue if it's been that way for over half a century? And, uh, as he mentioned, the golf courses across the street. I had to frequent that street very often, as Tudor knows, Cokely is further down, and we would walk down that particular avenue, and it's nice to have a residential area. All we're talking is postulating for something in the future. I don't think that's a good way to set policy that there's an heir of one of those properties in here, because the item prior to this is the exact same people. They may not want it to be retail. So I don't see what the clamor would be when there's no need for retail to destroy a residential area. Earlier, you were expressing concerns about residents. Why can't you be consistent?
All right, anyone else like to speak for or against this rezoning? State your name and your residence address.
Two eighty-five, Altes Palmas. I am also against it because of the fact that it's residential. I think sometimes it is called spot zoning that you do it for your convenience. I don't know what the problem is. But the thing is that residential should stay residential. No one took, um, um, the police didn't go out there and take account of the cars already. Can you imagine when it turns, uh, business? I mean, would you like to fight to get into your house with all the traffic? Get real here.
Anyone else like to speak for or against this rezoning? Yes, ma'am, one.
Good evening, I'm, I'm Michelle Abbott. I'm representing the, um, owner of the property, Joe Rodriguez. He bought this, um, as an investment to eventually turn it into, um, an, uh, business. So he's just asking for it to be rezoned for commercial instead of residence. And if you look at the property, I've been out there, um, there's only two houses, and the residents on properties lot five, six, and seven are in agreement to rezone it. So I don't see why there should be any, um, conflict of rezoning.
All right, thank you.
He does not know yet, but it, it's not going to be a bar. So he just, right now, purchased it as an investment, and is, would like to get it rezoned for commercial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, close the public hearing, and I have to see, which is consider and take action to approve ordinance on first reading for a rezone request that the government should describe property, I have to see attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding zoning ordinance, City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R one district to general retail GR district for zero point one three seven one acres out of lot five, uh, zero point one four six acres out of lot six, zero point two eight acres out of lot seven, and all of lot eight, block twenty-nine, Pinewood Heights subdivision, and zero point oh three acres tract out of block two, hall and quarter subdivision, all properties generally located on the south side of Taft Avenue, east of expressway seventy-seven, eighty-three, provided for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, uh, motion carries. Item seven, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single-family R one district to neighborhood services and NS district for lots one through three, block one oh three, Harlingen original town site, located at one oh one East Taylor Avenue. The applicant's body's still...
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property, which is this property here, from a residential single-family to neighborhood services to allow for office suites, possibly two office suites for lease on the subject property. You see the subject property located along West and Taylor Avenue. Uh, this is an aerial view of the property. As you can see, the subject property is vacant, been vacant for some time. The previous use of this property was actually a water tower on that property. Uh, as you can see to the north of the property, there's a restaurant to the north, the Barcetto Restaurant. To the south, you have residential use. To the east, you have a property that's vacant, that's zone light industrial, and then first quarter. Further south, you have storage warehouse, and then you have the drainage district offices on the subject property. To the west, you have a daycare, and then, as well as single-family residents. Uh, this is a view of the property. You can see it's a triangular-shaped property. Uh, so you're looking at it from the southwest, uh, and this is the daycare, and this is the property here, and then here's a daycare that's located directly to the west. The neighborhood services district is generally more like a light commercial-type district. It's designed to, to serve the domestic needs of the immediate neighborhood. Generally, in this area, you have a lot of domestic, uh, neighborhood services businesses, like you have a daycare, which I just mentioned. There's a flower shop to the south. You have a bakery, and then there's a tortilla factory, which has been there many years. The future land use, as you can see, shows it as, uh, general retail, so it is consistent with the general retail zoning and generally consistent with the surrounding land use in the area. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission at our last meeting. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. We notified the property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius. We see no objection to the request. Staff in P&amp;Z are recommending approval of the request. I'll take any question on the item.
And that's just to the east there, or the Union Pacific rail lines, right?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, let's go to item A, which is public hearing, and go to the public hearing, does anyone like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, close the public hearing, and go to item B, which is consider and take action to approve, well, an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request that the government should describe property, I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
Ordinance demanding zoning ordinance, City of Harlingen, rezoning lots one through three, Harlingen original town site, located at one oh one East Taylor Avenue, from residential single-family R one district, to neighborhood services and NS district, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like side, the motion carries. Item A, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first hearing for a specific use permit issued to Justin Kemberling to allow a bar lounge in general retail GR located at six forty north at Carey Drive, bearing a legal description of lot four, block one, South Point subdivision number two. The applicant is Justin Kemberling.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting the renewal of an existing permit issued to Justin Kemberling to continue operating the bar known as Hot Shots. It's located at six forty north at Carey Drive. Generally, the hours of operation will continue to remain the same, which would be seven days a week from three thirty p.m. to two a.m. This is, uh, this surrounding property is owned in general retail. This is an aerial view of the subject property. The request was reviewed by the building, fire, and health department. One of the changes he did make to this request is on the rear of the property, he has already started construction on the outdoor patio. The building, fire, and health are requiring him to submit the required plans for that particular patio, so that's one of the changes he's made to this request. We did have, notified the property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius. We see no objections to the request. Uh, the police department also submitted a report and is recommending approval. They showed six incidents, or five incidents during the six-month period. Staff in P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval subject to the applicant, providing the required, maintaining the required parking, maintaining the required lighting, uh, providing security during peak hours of operation from nine p.m. to two a.m., and maintaining his proper permits, and of course, compliance with the appropriate city department. And that includes submitting the required approved plans for that patio that he's started on initially. I'll take any questions on the item, the applicant is also present for questions.
Does that patio, there's a, an alley there.
Right.
Uh, does that patio hinge upon the alley? I know garbage is picked up back there.
It does not, it's on his property, but the only thing is he has to submit the required plans for that, and of course, he'd have to pass an inspection from the building and fire department prior to getting a C O for that particular area of the property.
And this is the second. He had a six-month, and now he's just renewing.
Right, that's correct.
Based on the time that he came before last night.
And we had concerns about some of the police report issues, and whether or not they were all accurate or attributable to him, and based on the information in our packet, the police is recommending approval of the S U P.
Right, that's correct, right.
And he had a camera issue the last time.
He did, and he does currently have nine operative cameras on the establishment.
That's a good example.
Okay, uh, let's go to, I don't know, A, which is, A, which is public hearing, and go to the public hearing, does anyone like to speak for or against this S U P? Hearing now.
Good evening. You were noting nine cameras are a good example of what, Commissioner?
For, for the record, yeah, every time you get up, even though I know, we know who you are...
I'm Randy's neighbor, twenty-four Chan Riverside Drive. That should certainly mollify your concerns. It's a good example...
A good example of us giving a six-month permit and everything working out.
And yet, Tudor glosses over like the next item, where there is, where there is twenty-four...
Do not address, do not address any individual members of the commission.
How come?
That violates the ordinance.
What ordinance? What ordinance? No, it does not.
You may speak for or against the S U P.
That is inapplicable law. As a lawyer, I'm telling you, you're wrong about any ordinance that exists about, say, in Tudor, or Victor, or even Boswell. Regardless, in regard to these matters, Tudor, or the math, the one, Commissioner, Commissioner two...
You're out of order, and you may sit down now.
I didn't, I...
You're out of, you're out of order, if you're not going to follow the...
I'm trying to respect commissioners.
I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Well, I'm, can I say commissioners? Our mayor? Is that permissible?
You can address, you can address the body, you may not, you may not address...
The body, okay, the body, the body has said...
If you violate it again, I'll ask you to sit down.
That's fine. The body has said that violence, that y'all heard about last night, I'm not talking about minor incidents. Every single month, in the next applicant, a violence, or public intoxication. One applicant unfortunately did not have any violations, and he's subject to different criteria. Everybody stays open until two a.m. That's a consistency, again, that y'all have friends, and you do certain things as a body. But, all I'm asking is for you to try to be consistent, because we see what you do, whether you believe it or not. They're all asking for two a.m. Friday is not a school night. You should be concerned about what happened yesterday in L.A. Be concerned about kids, but on, not on non-school nights. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for or against the S U P?
Yolanda Shoppe, two eighty-five, Altes Palmas. Last time when I came, someone thought that I knew the man that was applying for the, for the permit. No, I didn't know him. I just felt like that one of the things that was brought up, that he had too many police calls out there. And I thought, oh my God, watching you punish somebody, that because if there's a problem, you call the police, it goes against you. Do not call the police, even though you need it. You take the lawn to your own hands. That's not good. That's number one. Number two, about the cameras. He abide by the cameras, so he has the cameras, and now, you know, uh, it seems like it's a double standard here. Definitely a double standard. You have to stay by the rules. So many cameras, so many guards, and if you call the police, it goes against you. So don't call the police and take the lawn to your own hands. That's horrible to say, but that's what, it is understood. Thank you.
All right, uh, if there's one else. Hearing now, close the public hearing, and go to item B, which is consider and take action to approve ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow the operation of bar lounge that the government should describe property, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding zoning ordinance, number seven seven, City of Harlingen, issued a specific use permit to Justin Kemberling, allow bar lounge and general retail district located at six forty north at Carey Drive, bearing a legal description of block four, block one, Harlingen, South Point subdivision unit two, subject to one, maintaining the existing off-street parking spaces, two, maintaining the park. State the P and D C permit, three, maintaining video surveillance of all entrances and exits, and maintaining the thirty-day retention of the video. Four, continuing to provide adequate lighting on the premises. Five, continue to provide a licensed security guard in the parking... Five, continue to provide a licensed security guard in the parking lot during peak hours of operation on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Six, comply with requirements administered by the planning, building, and health fire and police departments, providing publication and obtaining other matters related foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Sub move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. If opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Out of nine, public hearing considered an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in general retail GR district located at 3811 West Business Highway 83, bearing legal description of 1.922 acres out of block 16, Stewart Place, subdivision survey 42, 297, Applewood.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant's requesting a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge at an existing 6,400 square foot building that's located at 3811 West Business 83. The previous use of actually this property was actually a wild build. The applicant is proposing to call this an establishment on rustlers. This is a subject property, you can see it's a, it's a building of property. The hours of operation will generally be from Monday through Saturday from 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Request was reviewed by the building, fire, and health department and engineering department. The building, fire, and health are recommending approval, subject compliance with all applicable codes and regulations. The part, the health department is noting that needs to, with address some plumbing issues related to the restrooms and the bar area. The city engineer is recommending approval with the condition that he brings the parking area up to code, to city regulations, re-stripe it, pave it, dress all the potholes, and dress the drainage, and provide landscaping on the parking areas. Public hearing was conducted before the P&amp;Z Commission. We didn't have a public hearing, and the staff and P&amp;Z are recommending approval, subject to the applicant, providing, maintaining the required parking, providing a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, maintaining his permits, and compliance with the appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions on the item, and the applicant is also present for questions.
Has this been a bar several times before?
Right, it's been, always been a bar at that location.
Wasn't it something else, though, more recently? Or is that why the number is probably on that?
Uh, it's, I think it's always, always been a bar lounge at that location.
Wild build, wild build.
Is, is the current applicant, does he own it, of the property?
Uh, no, he's leasing it to a different property, to a different applicant. That's why they're applying for the specific use permit.
You, you said something, but, you said it, but it wasn't in the packet. You said that they need to bring the parking lot up to compliance?
They're gonna have to bring the parking up to compliance, you know, to have-
And then you used the word landscape.
Right.
But that's not in the packet.
That's part of the conditions when, I think it's number, the last condition where it says they have to comply with, with the requirements administered by the planning, fire, building, health, and police department, so that's included.
So they're gonna bring all the landscape that, that has died off back up to-
Right, as well as on the parking area, you know. Based on the parking areas, you require a certain amount of landscaping, you know, with the parking area, as well as the drainage.
Because I, I see in my notes here that one of the commissioners asked that, and they were told it. It says, um, there was a question asked about landscaping, and you said, no. Somebody replied that no landscape would be required to be added to the building that's not expanding. And so, but they are gonna have to bring the landscaping that is supposed to be there up to standard?
Right, if it's, you know, some of it has been removed, because I drove by there this, this morning, and they're starting to work on the parking, parking-
I'm very familiar with the, with the, with the area, this is my district, that's why I asked.
Right.
And there, there were no, no objections from the La Casita?
Right, we, we did sit down, notice that-
La hacienda de Casitas.
Right, no objections from surrounding property owners, correct.
Okay. Has that, has that operated as a bar lounge since they opened that apartment?
Yes, it is.
It has?
It has, right.
No, no problems?
No, no problems, although he did include a report from the police department showing the incidents, and police department is recommending approval, also being it's gonna be under new management, so recommending approval of the request.
Okay. Let's go to I- N, public hearing. Is there anyone else speak for or against this S U.P.?
Yolanda Shaw for 280, Atos, 285, Atos Palmas. I'm very familiar with that place. It used to be the shooters, and there's a lot of action going on. So much action that nobody reports half of the stuff that goes in there. Number one, they had a stabbing. I bet you can't find it in their, in your reports with the police department, but there was a stabbing there at one time, if I remember correctly. And the plumbing, oh my God, that's why I stopped going. Big-time plumbing problems. So, before you all start taking, doing the thing about landscaping, worry about the plumbing. Worry about the, the safety, the health issues of that place. It needs a lot of plumbing problem. Yes, they did have a lot of problems, because through the edge on the, on this side, they had only one road that went into the apartment complex in the back. And I think it's still there. Hacienda, used to be Hacienda Little Apartments, now they're beautiful apartments. So, you won't, they never would call the police. They would take the lawn to their own hands. Believe me, I know.
Okay. Yeah, anyone else? Hearing now.
In that spirit of compromise, when I walked in, I believe that-
State your name and your address.
Ronald Lozano.
Andrew, Andrew Rabin.
At 2418 West Tottenham. The issue would be that aggravated assault that she might be referring to, there is a difference of category or caliber. And while I mentioned that the body spoke maybe of public intoxication as being one level, an aggravated assault maybe would be comparable to ISIS in some people's views. So, again, I would just ask that, in that spirit of compromise you all urged on the first applicant, that maybe when you hit these tough, tough spells like aggravated assaults, you come back sort of like on a probation, and review the kind of reports that Mr. Addicks is going to provide you, because he gave you a pretty thorough indication, replete with all kinds of levels of assaults, not just aggravated, and other incidents. So, maybe that's the kind of approach you should take on some of these applicants.
All right. Anyone else wants to speak for or against this, this S U.P.? Hearing now, close of public hearing. Go to I- B, which is considered to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge, as the above mentioned, described property, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
Ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 77, City Harlingen, issued specific use permit to one, Ramidis, Villar Bar Lounge in the general retail GR district located at 3811 West Business Highway 83, bearing legal description of the 1.922 acres out of block 16, Stewart Place subdivision, survey 42, 297, subject to one, proving and maintaining the existing off-street parking spaces, maintaining and maintaining the property state, P A D C permit. Three, providing and maintaining surveillance videos and parking lots, maintaining a 30-day retention of the video. Four, providing and maintaining active lighting around all bar lounge buildings and entrances. Five, providing a licensed security guard in the parking lot during peak hours of operation on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And six, comply with the requirements administered by the planning, engineering, building, health, fire, and police departments, providing publication and obtaining other matters related foregoing.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Sub move.
Is there a, second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing, now, all those in favor say aye. If opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Number 10, public hearing considered an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow up to 10 storage buildings on a property in the general retail and light industry district located at 101 Bass Pro Drive, bearing legal description of block one, block one, Cameron Crossing Phase 1 subdivision. Jesse Garcia, care of Bass Pro Shops.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant's requesting a specific use permit to allow up to 10 storage buildings for property where Bass Pro is currently located. The purpose of those storage buildings, according to the applicant, is for Santa's Wonderland decorations. This is, see the location of the subject property. And this is generally what the storage containers look like. They're eight feet by forty and a half, and eight and a half feet in height. Currently, they have them, they currently have three on site. I took a site visit today, and they have three on, on this corner, which would be the south corner of the property, and then there's about two in the boat storage area. Staff had recommended they move these containers to a less conspicuous place, which would be this area here where the loading areas is. However, the applicant stated it wouldn't be feasible due to the size of the parking area. During the public hearing, before the planning and zoning commission, the applicant recommended moving these to the boat storage area where it's, there's a fence around the boat storage area, there's landscaping around the perimeter of the subject property, so they, they wouldn't be as visible. Staff and P&amp;Z were in agreement with that. Public hearing was conducted, and staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval, subject to the applicant relocating the storage units to the boat storage area in compliance with the appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions on the item.
So we're not talking permanent structures, we're talking shipping containers?
Right, they're shipping containers.
And will anything flammable?
No.
Be stored there?
No, it's mainly the decorations for that, what he described for Santa's Wonderland, Christmas decorations.
So is this a temporary storage, or this will be here for years?
It's a, he didn't give the, technically temporary, he didn't give a timeframe on it, but that's mainly the purpose of it, just for that merchandise.
The P&amp;Z did not give them a timeline for it. Where do you have a permit for?
I thought we, one of them has a 60-day notice. That's the next one.
So this one does not have the 60-day?
No.
But the difference is that this one's gonna be in the boat storage area where they're, they're already storing trailer-like devices.
Right.
Well, it's not just got, it's, it's gotta have landscape around it, so eventually it'll be concealed.
So that does have landscape that they, they've done, it just has not finished growing in. Is that correct?
It is installed, it's around the perimeter of the fence, so there's, there is a fence and there's shrubs planted around-
It is fenced, so they're gonna put it in that corner.
This, this general area here, yes.
And do we have any limitation on how many they can have? There's three there now, or four, and there's, looks like there's eight or 10 sitting there in that picture.
That's an old picture, but he's requested up to 10. Right now, he currently has three, based on a site visit, and I think he has two on the boat storage area.
Currently, they have some in the parking area, like it shows right there?
Right, they have three right now. Those will be eventually removed, moved in, relocated to the boat storage area.
That's the photograph you provided, is that correct?
Right, this is an old aerial photo, but based, based on a site visit today, there's only three on the parking lot, and I think there's two in the boat storage area, I believe.
So that addresses the current request on their behalf, but by doing this, are you always saying that we're not gonna allow them to put any additional ones on, in that parking area?
Right, they would not be allowed to place them in the Bass Pro parking area, only in the boat storage area, which is the 10 that they requested on the application.
Can I clarify that question? We're not gonna allow them to put any on the parking lot, is that correct?
Right.
100% of them have to be in the boat storage?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, and, and the developer then objected to it?
The developer initially objected to them being placed here, that's the reason it came before the commission, because generally, these are processed administratively unless we get one written complaint, which the original developer did object to it, but-
But could he agree to this compliment?
He wasn't there, but the managers are the ones that agreed to relocate him, but the person who had the concern was not there at the meeting to say whether he was cool or against it.
I thought we had already talked to over the, the complainer.
Okay, but, have you talked to, Raddell, have you talked to Brett Conlin?
I've already got some, CEO for Harlingen Economic Development. Yes, I have talked to Brett Conlin, and they were satisfied with putting the storage containers in the boat storage area because of the screening that was gonna be at, at that site.
Okay, thank you. All right, then let's go to I- 10A. Public hearing, is there anyone wants to speak for or against this S U.P.?
Yes. That fence that y'all have alluded to, is that encircle the entire?
Again, I ask you politely to state your name and your residence address.
Mr. Audal also wants to give his residential address. Mine is 2410 Riverside Drive.
Is a staff member coming up to be a resource to the city commission? Sorry, but that's what the ordinance requires.
The, the ordinance says that he's a staff member. Y'all have that in the charter, and it's distinctly different. Regardless, does that fence totally encircle the area we're talking about?
What is your name? You have to state, you have to state your name.
Ronald Lozano. I already said it, 2410 Riverside Drive, you didn't hear. Harlingen, Texas.
Just go ahead, just, just give it. It's Ronald Lozano, I'll say it for you, Ronald Lozano Riverside Drive.
2410 Harlingen, Texas. Is that fence encircle entire perimeter that he's talking about?
The boat storage area.
All, every, every segment has got a fence around it.
The boat, the boat storage area, there's, so there's a fence and landscaping around.
So it could have either a landscape or a fence. It's not totally encircled by a fence. That's what I'm trying to glean out of you.
There is a fence around it.
Totally around it, all right. The previous item, I think, Mr. Lee, I, I think the body hit on a, on a particular keen thing, temporary, that an alleged leading candidate says a religion of the previous applicant should be temporary. I think, I think it, like the next item, 60-day was a lot safer way to go about doing things.
Anyone else wants to speak for or against this S U.P.? Hearing now, close of public hearing. Go to I- B, which is considered to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow 10 storage buildings at the above described property.
Ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 7-27, City Harlingen, issued specific use permit to Jesse Garcia, care of Bass Pro Shops, to allow up to 10 portable buildings on a property in a general retail GR and light industrial district located at 101 Bass Pro Drive, and bearing legal description of block one, block one, Cameron Crossing Phase 1 subdivision. Subject to one, providing and maintaining the required parking, according to city regulations, providing and maintaining the required landscaping, providing the units to the Bass Pro Boat Storage, provided, three, moving the units to the Bass Pro Boat Storage area, and four, complying with the requirements administered by planning, zoning, building inspections, and fire prevention departments, providing for publication and obtaining other matters related foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Sub move. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. If opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I didn't let the public hearing consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow two storage buildings in a light industry, a light district located at 110 Bass Pro Drive, and bearing legal description of block one, block one, Cameron Crossing Phase 4 subdivision, Applewood, Eddie Morales.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant's requesting a specific use permit to allow up to two storage containers on the site where Cracker Barrel is currently located. These are the two containers, which are on the rear of the subject property. During the public hearing, the planning and zoning commission had concerns about the aesthetics of those two units, and recommending that the, the units be allowed only for 60 days. I did contact the applicant regarding those, the, the decision of the planning and zoning commission, and he indicated they were gonna remove them at the end of January, so he's in agreement with the 60-day requirement. Staff and P&amp;Z are recommending approval, subject to the storage containers being removed within 60 days. I'll take any questions on the item.
So this is Cracker Barrel specific?
That's Cracker Barrels, and they may use them for seasonal merchandise, and, and the applicant stated that he would remove them within, by the, by the end of January, so he's in agreement with the 60-day requirements.
A, is public hearing, public hearing, is there anyone wants to speak for or against this S U.P.? Hearing now, close of public hearing. Go to I- B, which is considered to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow two storage buildings, as the above mentioned, described property, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
Ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 7-27, City Harlingen, issued specific use permit to Jesse Garcia, care of CBLCS Texas LLC, to allow two storage buildings in the light industrial district located at 110 Bass Pro Drive, bearing legal description of block one, block one, Cameron, Phase 4 subdivision. Subject to the specific use permit being limited to 60 days, providing for publication and obtaining other matters related foregoing.
Could I ask for a clarification? The 60 days is just, they have 60 days to get those off, and then they never come back?
That's correct, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? This one's obviously in a very prominent location in development, really, really is an eyesore for what we were trying to do out there, so I think that's a good suit if I, everybody involved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item twelve, consider to take action to approve a resolution to amend the city of personal policy manual sections two hundred, two hundred and one, two hundred and six, two hundred and seven, ten to eleven, three thirteen, and two twenty-one.
Yes, Mayor, city commissioners, what we bring before you is an item to amend our policy. Most of them are minor changes, but we're also updating our workplace violence policy to clearly not allow weapons in the workplace. I did include a summary of the changes for you. If you have any questions, we'll answer them for you, and the staff is requesting approval.
Anybody have any questions about these items? I guess we need a motion to approve the resolution that the personal policy has noted.
Sub move, Mayor.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
Done, Mayor.
I'd like to reappoint William T. Allen to the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board.
Is there a motion to approve board appointment?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Go to item fifteen, citizen communication, advise that there is no one signed up, so we'll go to item fourteen, which is the executive closed section for subchapter, or chapter five fifty-one, subchapter D, P T C A, Texas Government Code Sections, five fifty-one point oh eight seven, and five fifty-one point oh seven one regarding commercial and financial information from a business prospect with which city commission is conducting economic development associations handled to discuss or deliberate financial and other incentives with business prospect, known as Project Polar, possibly seeking the advice of the city attorney regarding this matter. Is there much to go in executive session?
Sub move, Mayor. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, city commission is gonna be with their attorneys to discuss a matter in executive session. There will be no, there are no other items on the agenda, and there will be no action taken when we come out of executive session. Thank you, and again, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everybody.